有一个叫做“小河”的村庄， 这个村庄的名字叫“小河” 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 我们在这里看到了很多的村庄，比如，
The meeting of the Broward County Commission is about to begin. Will all audience members please silence your cell phones? For those viewing from home or on mobile devices, thank you for watching. To stay informed about Broward County government, please visit broward.org or follow us on social media. County Commission meetings are open to the public. Members of the public wishing to be heard on any agenda item can register one of two ways. Visit registratespeak.broward.org and fill out the online registration form, or scan the QR code posted in various locations inside and just outside the commission chambers to register on your mobile device. A registration form must be completed for each item you wish to speak on. If you have trouble registering digitally, visit county administration on the fourth floor for assistance. All speakers must appear in person. No further speaker signups will be accepted after an item has been called. Please show respect for others and refrain from making impertinent slanderous remarks or personal attacks. Boisterous behavior, including applause, booing, and cheering is not permitted. Thank you for joining us. The meeting will begin shortly. Okay. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our Broward County Commission Board of County Commissioners meeting this Thursday, September the 7th, 2023. Again, welcome, everybody. I'd ask you to please now stand for the pledge, followed by the moment of silence.
Good morning.
Let me talk about that. Good morning, Commissioner Fur. Are you there, right?
Commissioner, Board of County Commissioners.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
I can. So we're going to do the pledge now in the moment of silence, okay? Okay. Ms. Kimberly, would you come forward and lead the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Just please remain standing for a moment of silence. Ladies and gentlemen, it's customary that we observe a moment of silence in honor of those notable persons from our community who have recently passed. I'm going to begin over here to my right. Commissioner Rogers, do you have anybody?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'll wait to see.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mrs. Pelita Lee Smith, who was a member of First Baptist Church Pineapple Grove for 66 years, has passed and just wanted to acknowledge her family members and their commitment. Zaline Zalreen McKenzie, who spent most of her life taking care of others as a teacher assistant and a nurse, has passed away. She will be missed by her family members, of course, and the ambassadors SBA church family. And that's my church that I got baptized, and so she's special to me. So please remember both families in your prayers.
Thank you. Senator Geller?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Two people, both were losses to the country. First, actually, the first concert that I ever went to in college was a Jimmy Buffett concert when I was a freshman. And I worked with Jimmy on a number of environmental programs. He was a truly great Floridian, cared very much about the environment and was, you know, back when it was good to be Florida man. He was Florida man, not what we think of today, but, you know, his death is a great loss for the state of Florida. And to move one step up, I met Governor Bill Richardson many times at various functions, and he also passed. My wife actually was supporting him in his Board of Run for President in, I don't know, about 12 years ago, something like that. But he was the first Hispanic to credibly run for President of the United States, and his work on freeing hostages was, again, a true humanitarian thing. So I think that the country is diminished by the loss of both Jimmy Buffett and Governor Richardson.
Thank you. Commissioner Dean?
Coral Springs lost former city commissioner Tom Powers, who served with distinction in the city of Coral Springs. Tom was pretty much a fixture in the northwest Broward community, a person who always fought for what he believed in, and a person who treated both people on different sides of the political spectrum with dignity and respect at a, you know, at a time when you don't always see that. Tom was a true gentleman, and the county is a little bit diminished for his loss.
Thank you. Ms. McKenzie, anybody?
A friend of mine, whose mom now, their family resides in Houston, originally from the Broward Estates Parkway areas, we call it, a former educator passed away in Houston a week ago, Ms. Brown. And then someone that we all know and shared together, Ken Kichel, who served here as a commissioner. And we served on many boards. We built affordable housing in the community with Homes, Inc. and the Rotellas. It's just, it's going to be a big loss, but he's not suffering anymore. Ken Kichel.
Amen. And I was too going to recognize, obviously, Mr. Powers, who was an impact in our community, and, of course, Commissioner and Mayor, former mayor of Broward County, Ken Kichel. Just truly a loss at such a young age. And so we want to pray for his family. And then lastly, Battalion Chief Jackson and Ms. Wheaton, as they lost their lives in the tragic accident of the Broward Sheriff's Office helicopter incident. So we want to keep them in our prayers. And we'll be celebrating Battalion Chief Jackson's life tomorrow in Sunrise at 10:00 a.m., if you want to join us out there. So let's also remember, of course, our brave men and women who have served and continue to serve in the armed forces, both here and abroad, and thank them for the service. I always want to add in, of course, our own law enforcement officers and our fire paramedic folks out there every day servicing us. Let's have a moment of silence.
Thank you, maybe see. Before we go on to our proclamations and the rest of our agenda, I do want to recognize a certain individual in our audience today who is sitting to my far left here, and his name is Sandy Michael McDonald. And the reason why I bring that attention to you today is because it happens to be his birth date today. So we wish you, my friend, many, many, many more birthdays, okay? I know you didn't like to be recognized. That's why I wanted to make sure I did it.
He looks fantastic for 72.
And actually, Mark Gale celebrated his birthday a couple of days ago on Labor Day. So, Mark Gale, happy birthday to you as well. All right. Today's music was brought to you by our own Commissioner Tim Ryan, "The First Woman's Simple Man" by Lynyrd Skynyrd. Those young folks probably don't remember Lynyrd Skynyrd, but we do. And then "Taxman" by The Beatles. So we want to thank him for his musical selections as well. Today, we have two proclamations. Our first proclamation will be National Direct Support Professionals Week. It was requested by Vice Mayor Nana Rich, who unfortunately can't be with us today. So Commissioner Rogers will make that presentation to Ms. Julie Price of Ark Broward, President/CEO, along with any of those other folks that are joining. Please come forward, and Commissioner Rogers will present that proclamation. Thank you.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Thank you, colleagues, and everyone in the audience or watching. Come closer, please. In our absence, or Vice Mayor asks that I do this on her behalf. So here we go. Proclamation, reclamation, requested by Commissioner Vice Mayor Nana Rich, Broward County. The week of September 10 through 16, 2023, has been designated as National Direct Support Professionals Week and celebrated by Ark Broward. And whereas Ark Broward is a 67-year-old Broward County nonprofit organization dedicated to supporting individuals with disabilities and other life challenges to reach their full potential, whereas direct support professionals provide essential care and long-term support and services to over 1,200 children and adults with disability, Ark Broward serves. And whereas direct support professionals provide a broad range of support to individuals with disability to help them live meaningful and productive lives, including assisting with personal care, medication management, transportation, assessing the community, securing gainful employment, and the pursuit of personal interests. And whereas Broward County residents are encouraged to recognize the dedication of direct support professionals and the important role they play in supporting and enhancing the lives of individuals with disability. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by Broward County Board of County Commissioners that the board hereby designate September 10 through the 16, 2023, as National Direct Support Professionals Week in Broward County, Florida, to raise awareness about the critical importance that direct support professionals play in the lives of people with disability. We are so thankful for all you do every day to make the lives of the families also. Okay. Thank you for everybody. And I do have proclamation, a copy of the proclamation for everyone. So who will be accepting this one? And then I'll just, alrighty. Paparazzi's on the side.
You'd like to say a few words, or?
Thank you very much. We appreciate this honor to be here today. We thank Vice Mayor Rich, Commissioner Rogers. Mayor Rich, Commissioner Rogers, and all of the commission. Again, I'm Julie Price. I'm with Ark Broward, and there's no greater thing that we are blessed to be able to do but to support individuals with disabilities, several of whom are with us today, along with a few of our most dedicated direct support professionals who have devoted countless days, hours, and years of their lives to support individuals so they can live, work, learn, and play in our community of Broward County. And you all do so much to help the our organization through the Human Services Division, through funding for several of our programs. Some of that funding helps the individuals who are here today. So we thank you for this honor to be here, to recognize the great work that direct support professionals do to change people's lives and give people tremendous opportunities. Thank you.
Alrighty. Commissioner Rogers, we'll get a picture here. Okay, everybody? All right. It's our second, our second proclamation is going to be for Workforce Development Month. And Carol Hilton, I believe, present CEO of Career Source Broward, is here, along with a bunch of wonderful people. Yeah! Is going to come join us at the podium. Commissioner Ryan, would you please head down for the proclamation as you'll be presenting it?
Eugene, are you going to present this proclamation?
No, sir.
No, sir. Commissioner Ryan, you're going to be doing that.
You know, I was told by my colleague, Robert McKenzie, that he doesn't get to do enough proclamations. So I asked if he would join us down here for this proclamation. And we're going to go like a tag team, and we're going to, each one of us will wear, excuse me, we'll, we'll read a paragraph, and then we'll, we'll go from there and, hi, Carol, how are you? You look great. All right. Whereas workforce development plays a critical role in contributing to the economic health, development, growth, and prosperity of our community. Whereas for the past 50 years, Career Source Broward has delivered quality workforce development services in the county under the guidance of Career Source Broward County Consortium of local elected officials, consisting of mayors of cities of Fort Lauderdale, Hollywood, and Broward County Commissioner, in partnership with the Broward Workforce Development Board, Inc. And... See, he didn't get a chance to read that beforehand. Whereas Career Source Broward's dedicated professionals assist hundreds of Broward County residents and businesses every year in both good and bad economic times, and even during natural disasters, by connecting Broward residents to jobs and a variety of workforce services. Whereas Career Source Broward's outreach in collaboration with local governments, chambers of commerce, employer associations, labor unions, community-based organizations, public and private educational institutions, is critical to connecting Broward residents to workforce services. And... Did that better than the last one. And whereas Career Source Broward partners with local educational institutions, help Broward County residents develop skills that expand their career options while also meeting the needs of our employers. And... Whereas working with employees, employers, through recruitments, job fairs, subsidized work-based training activities, helps not only to increase the employer's expenses, but also leads to the placement and retention of employees, which are instrumental to reducing local unemployment rates compared to other areas in the state and the nation. Now, therefore... Keep going. Finish it up. Be it proclaimed by the Broward County Board of County Commissioners, that the board hereby designates the September as Workforce Development Month and recognizes Career Source Broward for its 50 years of developing workforce services to the businesses, employers, residents, and citizens of Broward County. Signed by Mayor Lamar Fisher, September 7, 2023. Very well done. Very well done. You know, Mayor, I, I just observed that you actually listened to that entire proclamation. So we're, you know, we're very grateful for that. We have a number of workforce development partners that are here, but our executive director, Carol Hilton, is going to make a few remarks, and hopefully, you know, nobody could speak better about how well Workforce Broward has done, you know, for our community and for the entire South Florida area than Carol. So please, if you'll share a few words with us.
For 50 years, it has been Career Source Broward's mission to develop a skilled and resilient workforce. We strive to meet the talent needs of our employer community. We would like to thank Commissioner Ryan for sponsoring the proclamation before you and recognizing the work of Career Source Broward. As Chair of the Career Source Broward Council of Elected Officials, he is our foremost advocate and knows firsthand the impact that Career Source Broward has had on our job seekers and employers over the years. There is no economic development without workforce development. On behalf of the dedicated staff and board members, I believe Sandy and Tara Williams are here, and some of whom, as you can see, we brought, we still have people in the centers, I can assure you, working. But we really wanted to have staff recognize and be here because it really is through the efforts and their labor of love and commitment to Broward County that we are able to increase the self-sufficiency of the many that we serve. We want to extend our appreciation to the Broward County Board of County Commissioners for honoring Career Source Broward during September Workforce Development Month. As we look to the future, we are proud to be the convener of workforce development efforts that spur economic development and improve the lives of our citizens and residents. Thank you so much.
All right, let's get a photograph of everybody.
So let's, let's get a photograph up front.
Should I take the proclamation?
Yeah, take it with you.
And, and the extras?
Exes here, okay?
One more, you have your own bed, don't close your eyes.
One more, one more, one more. Pardon me, I'm pardon. Had to switch to a wider lens, we got such a large group. All right, everybody, count of three. One, two, three. Hold it once more. And last one, eyes up here. One, two, and three. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner McKenzie, for tag teaming that. That looked, worked out perfect. Alrighty, we'll let our folks exit the, the chambers here. And our reading clerk this morning is Ms. Jessica Fanner, is that correct? We're so glad to have you this morning. And I'm going to ask you now to read the Thursday morning memo, if you would.
Thursday Agenda Memorandum, the following are submitted for your consideration. Consent items are 1 through 40, public hearing items are 41 through 56, regular items are 57 through 64. I request the following withdrawals and scribbler error corrections and inclusion of additional information. Withdrawals, deferral substitutions, none, scribbler errors, item number 55, currently reads a two-year term from September 9, 2023, from September 8, 2025, should read a two-year term from September 9, 2023, through September 8, 2025. Additional information, item number four, the board's consideration of this item is based on the item as amended by the additional material distributed by the Office of the County Attorney. Items number five and six, the board's consideration of these items are based on the item distributed as additional material by the Office of the County Attorney. Item number 21, the board's consideration of this item is based on the substitute proposed ordinance distributed as additional material by the Office of the County Attorney. Item number 26 and 26, perent two, the board's consideration of this item is based upon the motion statement as amended and the replacement exhibit number two distributed as additional material. Item number 35, signature pages for exhibit one have been received. Item number 37, the board's consideration of this item is based on the revised motion statement distributed as additional material. Item number 41, approval of this item would adopt the resolution attached as exhibit one to the item, thereby transmitting to the applicable state agencies the text amendment contained in attachment one to exhibit one. Mayor requests without objection. Items number 58, 59, and 60 be moved to consent. Additional material, regular meeting, items 1A through 1E, board appointments. Item number four, proposed amendments to exhibit number one, paragraph three, submitted by Office of the County Attorney. Items number five and six, memo to the board regarding FADA-A grant agreements, disclosure submitted by Office of the County Attorney. Item number 21, substitute proposed ordinance submitted by the Office of the County Attorney. Item number 26, revise exhibit two, submitted by the Human Resources Division. Item number 26, perent two, amended motion statement submitted by Mayor Lamar P. Fisher. Item number 37, memo to the board regarding revised motion A, motion statement submitted by Libraries Division. Item number 64, proposed framework for death benefits grant program submitted by county administration. Additional material, public hearing, none.
Well done. Thank you. Appreciate you. Okay. We're now under our consent agenda. We're asked for any polls. Commissioner Bogan, you have any polls?
No, I don't.
Very good. Commissioner Dean?
No, sir.
Senator Geller?
None, sir.
Commissioner Fur on the phone? Any polls?
No poll.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
No poll.
Thank you. Commissioner McKenzie?
I will be your assistant.
All right. And Commissioner Rogers? Very good. Ms. Shapiro, any polls?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Myers? Very good. Mr. Melton? Very good. How many won the public?
No polls from the public.
No polls from the public. Okay. So, Mr. Myers, set up the consent agenda for full approval. We appreciate you. Go ahead.
Mayor, the consent agenda for today consists of items 1 through 40, plus items 58, 59, and 60.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda as read by the county attorney.
And I will second that.
Senator Geller makes the motion. Commissioner McKenzie second. Any for discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Seven, seven to zero, I guess it is? Eight? Can I, can I take Commissioner Fur? Eight, zero? Very good. Eight oh, baby.
Okay. Alrighty. Moving quickly on, our consent now is now completed, so we're going to move to our public hearings. Item 41 through 54, of course, our, our public hearings, followed by items 55 and 56 for our water control district. So our first public hearing, item number 41. Jessica?
The public hearing on item 41 is now open. The item 41 is a motion to adopt resolution transmitting to designated state agencies, county land use plan text amendment PCT 23-2, updating policy 2.21.6 regarding climate change action plans. No members of the public have signed up to speak.
Question?
Public portion closed. Commission's discussion. Senator Geller?
Yes, as I've discussed with county attorney, it's just confusing the format that these amendments are in. So I want to verify that we're voting on attachment one to exhibit A and not attachment one to exhibit two, which are, one is an A and the other is a two, which, you know, is also confusing, instead of A and B or one and two. But, so, am I correct that we're voting on attachment A to exhibit one? And there's got to be a less confusing way of putting these in.
Yes, sir. And thank you for pointing that out during briefings. We are indeed voting on the first one that you mentioned. It is referenced in the Monday memo. It's the one that includes the shaded language that reinserts some provisions, just for perfect clarity in the record. I get confused as to even whether it's attachment one to exhibit one or attachment one to exhibit A, but it's definitely not attachment one to exhibit two. And, and there is going to be a process to put that in going forward to make sure the record's very clear.
Thank you. In which case, Mr. Mayor, I move adoption.
Second.
Senator Geller moves it by like Commissioner McKenzie. Very vocal today, I like that. Seconds the motion. Any for discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Very good. Passes eight, zero. Thank you so much. Item 42?
The public hearing on item 42 is now open. Item 42 is a motion to enact ordinance adopting a small-scale amendment to the county land use plan map PC 23-3 in the city of Parkland. No members of the public have signed up to speak.
Public portion closed. We have Senator Geller moved it, seconded by Commissioner Bogan. Any for discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go. Eight, zero passes. Thank you so much. Item 43?
The public hearing on item 43 is now open. Item 43 is a motion to enact ordinance pertaining to zoning, amending various sections of chapter 39 of the county code of ordinances. No members of the public have signed up to speak.
Move it.
Public portion now closed, moved by Commissioner Bogan, seconded by Senator Geller. Any for discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go. Opposed? Eight, zero, that passes. Item 44?
The public hearing on item 44 is now open. Item 44 is a motion to adopt resolution transmitting to designated state agencies, county land use plan text amendment PCT 22-7, revising the city of Dania Beach Activity Center. No members of the public have signed up to speak.
Public portion now closed.
Mayor, I wish to, uh...
He's done. Move it.
Discuss the item.
Commissioner Ryan, go ahead, before we take our motion. Go ahead.
I'm going to abstain from item 44. So at the last meeting on August 27, I abstained from voting on item 34, which set today's public hearing on this item. Now this item is before us for an actual public hearing. I'm abstaining. Item 44 involves a proposed land use plan amendment affecting Dania Beach Activity Center, where real property which I have an ownership interest is located. The proposed land use plan amendment could financially impact the real property which I have an ownership interest. I will therefore be leaving the dais and not voting on item 44. I ask that the minutes of the meeting, please reflect that I have abstained.
And thank him for that unscripted speech.
Commissioner Ryan, you don't have to leave the dais. That's okay. Okay, any for the discussion?
Move it.
Motion, motion by Commissioner Bogan, seconded by Senator Geller. Any for discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Fur. So it passes a seven to, and with one abstention. Thank you. Item 45?
The public hearing on item 45 is now open. Item 45 is a motion to adopt resolution pertaining to the paratransit fare structure, amending section 41.04 of the county administrative code to increase the maximum amount per trip on the subsidized transportation payment card. No members of the public have signed up to speak.
Public portion now closed, moved by Senator Geller, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any for discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go. Passes eight, zero. Thank you. Item 46?
The public hearing on item 46 is now open. Item 46 is a motion to adopt resolution pertaining to rates, fees, and charges Item 46 is a motion to adopt resolution pertaining to rates, fees, and charges at Fort Lauderdale Hollywood International Airport, amending section 39.2 and exhibit 39.8 of the County Administrative Code to reflect changes to rates, fees, and charges. No members of the public have signed up to speak.
Okay, public portion closed. Commission discussion. Commissioner Bogan?
Are we raising rates for parking?
Just going from me. Commissioner Shapiro, go ahead.
So, as you may recall, during the budget workshops for both the port and the airport, there were discussions about different provisions. At the airport, there is not a proposal at this time for raising of parking rates. At the port, there is a proposal. On this item, there is not, at this time.
Okay, I park a lot there. I just wanted to know if I'm getting hit in the wallet.
Moved by Commissioner Bogan, seconded by Senator Geller. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? We got it. Eight, zero, that passes as well. Item 47.
The public hearing on item 47 is now open. Item 47 is a motion to adopt supplemental budget resolution within the general fund in the amount of $608,550 to amend revenues and appropriations prior to the close of the fiscal year. No member of the public has signed up to speak on this item.
Public portion closed.
Move it.
Seems to be a trio or a duo here. Commissioner Bogan, followed by Senator Geller. Seconds. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Commissioner Fur?
Beam?
Commissioner Fur?
Aye.
There we go. All right. Don't break my record here. Passes eight, zero. Thank you so much. Item 48.
The public hearing on item 48 is now open. Item 48 is a motion to adopt supplemental budget resolution within the special revenue funds in the amount of $34,562,289 to amend revenues and appropriations prior to the close of the fiscal year. And no member of the public has signed up to speak on this item.
Public portion now closed. Moved by Senator Geller, seconded by Commissioner McKenzie. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight, zero.
Aye.
Thank you. Item 49.
The public hearing on item 49 is now open. Item 49 is a motion to adopt supplemental budget resolution within the capital outlay funds in the amount of $8,397,047 to amend revenues and appropriations prior to the close of the fiscal year. No member of the public has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, public portion closed. Commissioner McKenzie moves it, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, it was eight, zero. Thank you. Item number 50.
The public hearing on item 50 is now open. Item 50 is a motion to adopt supplemental budget resolution within the enterprise funds in the amount of $92,965,600 to amend revenues and appropriations prior to the close of the fiscal year. No member of the public has signed up to speak on this item.
Public portion now closed.
Second.
Senator Geller, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Motion carries eight, zero. Item 51.
The public hearing on item 51 is now open. Item 51 has two parts. The board will consider and vote on both parts at the same time. Part A is a motion to adopt supplemental budget resolution within the internal service funds in the amount of $1,422,000 to amend revenues and appropriations prior to the close of the fiscal year. Part B is a motion to adopt supplemental budget resolution within the debt service funds in the amount of $8,391,987 to amend revenues and appropriations prior to the close of the fiscal year. And no member of the public has signed up to speak on this item.
Public portion now closed. Motion? Moved by Senator Geller, seconded by Commissioner McKenzie. All in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight, zero. Item 52.
The public hearing on item 52 is now open. Item 52 is a motion to enact ordinance pertaining to the airport transportation district, amending section 39-352 of the County Code of Ordinances regarding fencing and walls within buffers. No member of the public has signed up to speak on this item.
Public portion now closed. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Commissioner McKenzie says yes, and first, then Commissioner Rogers seconds the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight, zero. Thank you. Item 53.
The public hearing on item 53 is now open. Item 53 is a motion to enact ordinance pertaining to flood plain management for unincorporated Broward County, amending various sections of chapter 5 of the County Code of Ordinances, providing requirements for coastal high hazard areas, accessory structures and agricultural structures in the flood hazard areas, and elevation of manufactured homes in flood hazard areas. No member of the public has signed up to speak on this item.
Public portion now closed on this item. Senator Geller?
Just want to let you know, y'all should read this. It really does make some substantial changes to our development in Broward County pertaining to where you can build, things of that, because of the we're changing the code dealing with our flood elevations and flood hazard areas. So just, it's, although we're going to pass it quickly and I'm sure unanimously, this really is significant legislation.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
Move it. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Bogan, seconded by Senator Geller. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody? Opposed? Passes eight, zero for that one as well. Before we get to item 54, because I know we have a speaker for that, I do want to recognize someone in our audience here today. This is our own Commissioner McKenzie's pastor, senior pastor from the First Baptist Church of Pony Grove, Dr. Ezra Tillman, is visiting our county commission today. Dr. Tillman, we absolutely welcome you with open arms. Thank you for being here. Very good. Okay, item number 54.
The public hearing on item 54 is now open. The final county commission public hearing item is item 54, which is a motion to enact ordinance pertaining to emergency decorations and authorities, amending sections 8-53 and 8-56 of the County Code of Ordinances. One member of the public has signed up to speak, and that speaker is Chris Nelson.
Mr. Nelson, please come forward. And good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners Chris Nelson, Fort Lauderdale. And when I see emergency management, I'm like, oh my goodness, I'm going back to 2020, when you guys abuse your power to a level that has not been seen in my lifetime through a never-ending emergency order and unscientific and restrictive and punitive mandates on the public. I look at this, and you want to say that the county administrator can take whatever prudent action is determined necessary to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of visitors of Broward County. Well, how did those mask mandates work out? And let me just tell you. What you guys did with your two-year-long emergency declaration, it punished the working class. You guys were fine. You guys kept your jobs, you guys kept your salaries. The laptop class did great. But guess who suffered? People in restaurants. You guys sent your thugs to come shut down restaurants, to come harass people, to put up signs on doors instructing neighbor to snitch against neighbor if they saw somebody with a mask, out of mask. This is unacceptable. This will never happen again. Not thanks to you, but thanks to our governor Ron DeSantis, who has tied your hands. And none of you really had to pay any political consequences for this. Nobody really challenged you. You guys are all still sitting up here in spite of what you did to us. But, under the new law, you guys have restrictions against you now that limit you. Your emergencies must be narrowly tailored to serve a compelling public health or safety purpose. This is new, okay? And not based on what you think, based on reality. It also states that emergency can only be extended a total of 42 days and only by a majority vote of the governing body of the political division. You guys, the governor also has the authority to strike any emergency declaration that quote unnecessarily restricts individual rights or liberties. This was put into place because of what you guys did. We can't go back to doing this again, okay? I get it, some people are germaphobes. You have a right to stay in your basement as long as you want. But you can't impose your will on the rest of us. My wife lost her life savings, my business was damaged, and for what? That's what I would like to know. And I want to tell you this. In Florida, we are not allowing the dystopian delusions of paranoid hypochondriacs to control our lives or our state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Any further public comment?
No, that's all.
Public portion now closed.
Move it.
It's moved by Commissioner Bogan, seconded by Senator Geller. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I thought those were very stirring remarks. And you got to tell me, did you change your hair? It looks great.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Excuse me, excuse me. Commissioner Fur, are you aye?
He's aye, 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 aye.
Commissioner Fur, are you there?
Aye, 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 aye.
Very good. Motion passes eight to zero. That concludes our public hearings. We are now under our Water Control District's public hearing, and that which addresses, of course, the appointments to the Water Control Advisory Boards. Our 55A is a motion to open the meeting as the governing board of Water Control District number four.
Second.
Moved by Senator Geller, seconded by Commissioner Bogan. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight, zero. Item B is a motion to approve the reappointment of Jill Sarver to the Water Control District number four advisory board for a two-year term from September 9, 2023, from September 8, 2025.
Mayor, can I just say, who appointed her? One of our commissioners, or?
One of our commissioners. This is a reappointment, so somebody would have appointed since conception. So we're going to get that answer. Ms. Shapiro?
Yes, so my understanding is, so this is a continuation of a reappointment. There are, it's a three-person water advisory board, and there are certain restrictions that, about ownership of property and whatnot in the district, and it is very limited interest in serving on this board. And this individual has requested to be reappointed, and we're happy to have an appointment.
I take the hint. Let's not move it.
Moved by Commissioner Bogan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Don't ask that question.
Yeah, where were you getting that?
Commissioner Fur?
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Motion carries eight to zero. Is there a motion to close the meeting as the governing board of the Water Control District number four?
Move it, close.
Moved by Commissioner Bogan, seconded by Commissioner McKenzie. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight, zero. Item 56A, a motion to open the meeting as the governing board of Kokomar Water Control District.
Move it.
I get to say it.
Move it, second.
It's moved by Commissioner Bogan, seconded by Commissioner Dean. Item B, it's a motion to approve reappointment of Randell Blanchett to the Kokomar Water Control District Advisory Board for a two-year term from September 9, 2023, just from, through September 8, 2025. Is there a motion? Moved by Commissioner Bogan, seconded by Senator Geller. Further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We're doing A and B, now we're going to go C.
Move to close, move to close.
Okay, a motion to have the meeting of the board governing board of the Kokomar Water Control District been moved to close by Commissioner Bogan, seconded by Commissioner Dean. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Excuse me, aye is a favor. That's an eight, zero vote as well. So that ends our Water Control District public hearing. Jessica, I just wanted to go through that, so I apologize for just reading those, okay? All right, so we're now under our regular agenda.
So, item 57 is delegation Rebecca Corder referencing the National Youth Advocate Program.
Very good. Ms. Corder? Good morning. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you for having me.
Just want to pull that microphone down just a little bit so we can make sure we hear you. Thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
Perfect.
All right, good morning, esteemed Broward County Commissioners, community members, and fellow advocates. I stand before you today with a deep sense of purpose and enthusiasm as I share about a program that's been making a positive impact in the lives of our youth and families, National Youth Advocate Program. As a dedicated member of this community, I believe in the power of collaboration and the importance of nurturing our future generations. A National Youth Advocate Program aligns perfectly with these values. I'm here to shed light on our program with the hope that you'll help us grow by sharing the message today with your friends, family, and fellow colleagues. The National Youth Advocate Program has been a steadfast partner in providing comprehensive services to children, youth, and families in need across Broward County since 2008. As we know, our community faces various challenges that affect our youth's well-being, such as unstable living conditions, mental health struggles, and educational disparities. NIAP addresses all of these issues head-on through a holistic approach that centers around support, advocacy, and empowerment. One of the hallmarks of National Youth Advocate Program is its commitment to foster care services. I would like to dispel the myth that being a foster parent is reserved for an extraordinary person. A foster parent can be any one of us deciding to look beyond a child in crisis and see an opportunity to help a family in need. Unfortunately, we're seeing a shortage of foster homes compared to the number of children coming into foster care. Our program provides all the required trainings and guidance for prospective foster parents. We also provide personalized attention to children and any child's emotional, physical, and educational needs to ensure they're met on a daily basis as soon as they're placed in any of our foster homes. We also ensure that foster parents are given the necessary tools to parent successfully through a trauma-focused lens. National Youth Advocate Program doesn't just provide a temporary solution, it strives to create a nurturing environment that provides and promotes stability and resilience, allowing our youth to thrive despite challenges they may face. Additionally, National Youth Advocate Program extends its reach beyond the foster care system. We also have outpatient mental health services and community respite programs that focus on strengthening families and preventing unnecessary removals of children from our homes and the community. By offering counseling, skill building, and resources, National Youth Advocate Program equips parents and guardians with the tools they need to provide a safe, supportive environment for their children. What truly sets NIAP apart is its dedication to community partnership. We jointly work with Broward County School System, Guardian at Lightem Program, Childnet, and many other organizations to enrich the lives of the families we serve. We provide a comprehensive network of support, and this collaborative spirit aligns perfectly with Broward County's commitment to working together to create a brighter future for its residents. In closing, I urge you, esteemed commissioners, to share this message. If you or someone you know is interested in serving a youth in need, please contact us at 877-NIAP-KEN or visit our website at niap.org. Children belong in the least restrictive, most family-like setting available to them, and by spreading this message, you're supporting NIAP's mission, vision, and values, and you're not only investing in the well-being of our youth, but also contributing to the overall strength and vitality of Broward County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Corder, for the valuable information. We appreciate that. Thank you so much. Okay, item number 61.
Item number 61 is a motion to discuss results of PFAS testing undertaken by Commissioner Bogan.
We'll turn that over to Commissioner Bogan.
Mayor, in an effort to make it so this will be the shortest meeting in the history of meetings, I'm going to just say real quickly that the testing all finished, and I'm going to push this to our next meeting. I like to push this for our next meeting. And I do want to tell you that the bottled waters, that six of them were checked. Not one of them, all of them came clean with no PFAS. The cities that we did had issues, but I would like to talk about it next meeting.
Very good, Commissioner Bogan. Thank you.
Thank you. How do I do that? It's, Mayor, it's withdrawn, and we'll just make sure it's back on the agenda. Thank you.
Yeah, it doesn't need a vote for that.
Thank you.
Okay, item 64, turn over to Ms. Shapiro after we read it. Okay, item 64, turn over to Ms. Piero after we read it.
Item 64 is a motion to discuss and direct county administration to take appropriate action regarding the creation of a formal program to provide death benefits for Broward County law enforcement officers and firefighters who were killed in the line of duty in Broward County.
Thank you, Jessica. Ms. Piero?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, back in April, Commissioner Bogan brought an item to the board to discuss and direct myself to bring something back to this body related to creation of a, kind of a formal program for death benefits, to provide death benefits for Broward County law enforcement officers and firefighters who are killed in the line of duty here in Broward County. So what we had done is, as I had shared with you during some of the budget discussions, I was, I have recommended amount in our budget for a recurring basis, a small amount, which you see in the, in the agenda summary there, to accommodate that type of program. So what you will see as additional material that we distributed, I believe late last evening, is kind of a proposed framework for what we would envision that could look like. It's largely and loosely based on something that we had done some research on with the Department of Justice, and how these types of things are looked at and analyzed around the country. Obviously, these are some suggestions. Why bringing this forward to you today in this format instead of after October 1st, when it was initially contemplated to bring forward to you in light of some recent unfortunate events here in Broward County? Clearly, we will be working closely with Drew and the county attorney's office on, on making sure everything stays within the legal parameters that we are, are free to work within as it relates to potential any other issues that we may come across with unions or otherwise. So we want to make this quick, sweet, and bring it back to you all, but I wanted to bring this forward to you to get some feedback, to see if there's anything either today on the dais, or individually you can come to us as we fine-tune this program. And, and lastly, what I would like to share is that obviously the intent would be, if the board so chooses, that we would make whatever program immediately retroactive to, to accommodate the unfortunate accident that happened last week. So with that, I'm willing to listen to any feedback, either now or individually, you can get back to me, we'll turn this around quickly and bring back a formal program to put that into motion.
Followed by Commissioner Bogan, followed by Senator Geller.
So, on April 4th, we, we voted, and Senator Geller, co-sponsored by this matter, and basically it was, in the summary explanation background, county administrator, it says that we are gonna provide surviving spouse or children of those, of those law enforcement or firefighters killed in line of duty, one year, 12 months of funds used toward their mortgage payment, property taxes, or rent. It was not for you to bring back a program. The motion to, motion to discuss and direct was to take appropriate action with regards to providing death benefits, and those benefits we all agreed would be to pay their rent, mortgage, and taxes. Because they get benefits, but it takes them a long time because of all the federal requirements. Now you're going, talking about a federal program, which gets it into me in the bureaucracy, they need to make payments immediately. They need someone that can act quickly. You can act within 24 hours, once we find out. I, I just think you, you want to go by federal guidelines now? We never asked for that. The thing was, somebody dies in the line of duty, that spouse is gonna need a rent check, and they don't get money, from my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, they don't get benefits anywhere between 30 and 120 days, going through federal and state stuff. So I thought here we'd be kind of somebody that can act quickly. And, 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 and then you put in your fixed amount, I don't know what the rent's gonna be, it's two grand a month, it's 24,000, if it's three grand a month, 36,000, you know? So my issue with this is, we were gonna hopefully be somebody on the local level that can act quickly, somebody that can pay that rent, and then I know that you talked to me on the phone and said, well, what if there is no rent? What if they paid their mortgage? What if they paid their taxes? Do we want to still provide them something? Well, we didn't talk about that at this point. All, my concern, my first thought was, learning that it gets a while to get their benefits, who's paying the rent, who's paying the mortgage taxes for a year, give them some relief?
I think it's timing for you. You want to make sure it's almost immediate on our end.
Right, not where they gotta fill out an application, you put in here, gotta fill out an application, and then it comes back, and then HR's gonna study it, HR could, I mean, you get buried in somewhere. Someone's gonna need help, they don't, fill out an application. The gentleman that, that passed away in the helicopter crash, I'm sure we could find out within one day, calling the sheriff, tell us some information, and then decide how we want to do that. But I, I understand your point was, well, what if there is no mortgage taxes, or a mortgage or rent? What do we want to do that? That's something we didn't discuss, and, you know, I just hope you guys don't go to some program where they gotta fill out applications, and then we gotta go investigate and see, and it's just, you know, it just, to me, it gets...
My thing with Ms. Piero's item is, is obviously get input from this skeleton here, and then she can come back with it, but it's a good point, Commissioner, very good point. I didn't want to cut you off, are you?
No, no, I'd like to hear what everybody else feels.
Yeah, we're gonna continue on with discussion. Senator Geller?
I agree in part with Commissioner Bogan and disagree in part. I agree with him on the part that whatever we're doing needs to be paid promptly. I, I, I agree with you, that is an issue that, that occurs. I did have a couple of questions and concerns. One, I think that, we're talking relatively modest sums. I think what we're talking about is $25,000 total per death, at least that was on the proposed, let me finish, Commissioner, okay? At least that's on the proposal that we have. I would not be supportive of, and I don't think that we should say it can only be paid for rent for this, that frequently they're gonna need it for final burial expenses, things like that, so. Whatever number it is, I think we should just say that this is an additional benefit from the county. It will be very rare, because fortunately, we don't have that many officers or firefighters killed in the line of duty, and when we're talking about that, then, you know, I think we should be giving the additional benefits. When I was in the Senate, I passed similar legislation saying that any firefighter or police officer killed in the line of duty, that their surviving spouse or children could get free college tuition in, in Florida. So trying to make sure that the death of a breadwinner would not, would not prevent their spouse or children from going to college. So, I mean, we've done that, I am supportive of this, I just, and this where I would disagree with Mr. Bogan, that I don't think, and if you were saying this, I don't think it should be, I agree with you, it needs to be prompt. I don't think it should be limited to, you know, only mortgage payments or whatever, whatever the number is, you know, it's a small thing. County attorney, when we are defining killed in the line of duty, I assume that this is referring to something where there's, you know, a shooting, a crash, something like that, and we're not saying, well, they were exposed 40 years ago to something, and now 40 years later, when they passed away, there's a claim that that was because it was in the line of duty. How are we defining in the line of duty?
And Senator, we, we just saw this also late yesterday. I do have notes from the board's discussion when it discussed it a few months back. There was discussion about, you know, potentially some sort of, you know, disease or condition that was a hazard from that position, but there was also a short temporal component, I had in my notes, one year. But these are all policy decisions, and, and as the county administrator mentioned, we're happy and ready to work with them to finalize this. We do not see a lot of legal obstacles here. We think that any could be easily navigated, and, and this could be simplified to avoid some, so we're happy to, happy to work on that.
Okay, well, if I, these are my personal recommendations. Number one, it be made retroactive to the date of Commissioner Bogan's, I believe you said that was April?
April 4th.
April 4th, that this, that this be made retroactive to April 4th, which I believe deals with Ms. Piero's issue. I don't believe that, with the exception of the recent airplane crash. I mean, I hope that that's the only person it affects, maybe there's been one other, but to be made retroactive to April 4th, the date that the commission passed this, number one. Number two, that it be a fixed amount, and we can discuss what that amount is, and that that would go, and I have no problem with the priority, which is, you know, spouse, independent children, then spouse, then dependent children, et cetera. There's a list of seven people in priority. I've got no problem with that order of priority, but I think it should be a fixed sum, go to them as quickly as possible, so that it can be used for whatever expenses, which candidly will include, you know, final expenses. And I would like to know that there is some, I favor a broad definition, but a short time period. So perhaps one year, perhaps two years, no more than probably two years.
Hi, Mayor.
And that it be fixed at, at that level, but again, if it's toxic exposure or something like that, but it's within the year or two of the, of that, and those are my suggestions.
Very good. Before we continue, I just want to recognize Mayor Ryan from Danger Beach. Thank you much for joining us, we appreciate you and all you do for us.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Okay.
Mayor, Mayor, can I? You didn't return my call.
I know, I'm gonna let Commissioner Bogan respond before I go to Commissioner Ryan, okay?
Thank you. I'm good with the set amount, that's fine. I, I think the set amount should probably be closer to 50,000, because if, property taxes and rent would probably max that out. I wouldn't be giving, this is not for insurance policy, you give to parents and adult non-independent children, and this is to help them right away, and I think the first three might be, you know, you give it to the spouse first, and then maybe spouse and kids if they're not living together, and then dependent children. I don't see why we're making this like an insurance policy, it wasn't meant that way. If you guys want to be more generous, great, but I, four, five, six, seven, this is not an insurance policy, it was really to help them out right away if they get killed in the line of duty. And if you wanted to do a fixed amount, I would suggest what we talked about at our first meeting when we voted on it was 50,000.
Mr. Mayor, if I just might add a clarifying point.
Ms. Piero?
Commissioner Bogan, I just want to make sure for, for everyone to understand, this is the order of who would get the payments, because for example, with the gentleman that would be eligible, that deceased last week, he's not married.
So then if spouse went first, it would be number two, two would be one. He is not married, then the dependent children would get it.
That, that's, that's the order of the watershed, that's the suggestion.
I would be switching two and one, I don't know if you guys would agree, but the spouse, I think, who takes care of the kid, I mean, I'd give the spouse the 100%, if she, if there's no spouse, then I'd give it dependent children.
And also, Commissioner, we've found some instances that, for example, they may be remarried, and the original, the parent, the other parent of the children maybe would be taking care of the children. So there's a lot of different scenarios and things that we, we foresee that might be circumstances that we might not think of right off the bat, that we already found in this particular situation, and that's why we went to a, the watershed, which is based on some other programs we've seen. Again, I just, a waterfall, sorry, I always call it the wrong word. The order of the, of who you go to for the payments, and that's the only reason those are listed as examples.
Okay.
Okay. On to Commissioner Ryan.
This was brought up in April, I thought it was a, a good idea. I'm very comfortable with the amount, and most importantly, that, you know, the benefits be available, you know, within, I guess, 20 or 30 days after the law enforcement officer, firefighter is, is killed in the line of duty. It's the definition of killed in the line of duty that, you know, I just, I want to clarify, because I, I think frequently you could have, you know, a police officer or firefighter that encounters, you know, a very stressful incident, and, you know, may, may die the following day, or, or may, you know, suffer a heart attack and die, you know, a month later or something like that. So as long as we can, can, you know, connect up that nexus, you know, killed in the line of duty, and I think, you know, Commissioner Geller actually brought it out, you know, what happens if somebody is exposed to, you know, some environmental hazard that brings about, you know, injury, disease, or death? You know, what, what's, what's the situation gonna be if somebody, you know, you know, contracts cancer and we're, you know, we're exposed to, to something, maybe, you know, a, you know, a fire where they were, you know, working inside a building that had, you know, hazardous chemicals, or, you know, you know, building that's, you know, the roof structure is filled with asbestos, and, you know, you get exposed to that, but you don't actually suffer the ailment for maybe months afterwards, and, you know, who's gonna make that decision about the correlation or the nexus between the injury that leads to death, you know, and, you know, some other, some other causation? So, you know, I, I actually defer to you, Commissioner Bogan, I mean, what would you like as far as how broad would you like to have the circumstances by which, you know, somebody would be eligible?
Mr. Bogan?
Again, I would, it was only intended for those people who are at work and got, and they were killed during, in the line of duty. If they get shot at work and the next day they die, they're killed in the line of duty. If they get in a fire and smoke inhalation, and they die two days later from that fire, they were, got killed. But something that happened 20 years ago, that, you know, 30 years ago, I think that's taking on a lot for our taxpayers, and it's not something, you know, that they have civil remedies for that and other issues. This was mainly for people who are killed, killed in the line of duty.
Agreed. Commissioner, Commissioner Udine?
Thank you. First of all, I'm in favor of the concept of this, and I think it's smart that we do this. The problem always comes when we have to put pen to paper, and I, what I say here is, here's what I think, my opinion is on this. We can't do this by just calling the sheriff, hey, did this person die? Was he, did he, there's gotta be a process that has to be filed, and once anything goes into the hands of government, it gets majorly screwed up, because that process, and I'm not blaming government, but there has to be a process. You could look at, at any time the government rolls out a program, because I can think just in this conversation of about 40 issues that I've just heard. When, when the county gives the check to this person, are they cashing it, are they taking it? Does that, is that a set off now in the lawsuit that they're eventually gonna bring? These are major and real legal issues that we're gonna have. What I think we should do, because I know you've budgeted 50,000 for this, there is a charitable organization, be it United Way, be it the Sheriff's Advisory Fund, put 50,000 in the budget, earmark it to United Way. We want this 50,000 to go to Broward officers that get hurt, injured, or killed in the line of duty for whatever reason, that's the exposure, they handle the application. What happens if you're a Miramar police officer, you're a resident of the city of Miramar, and you are a police officer in the North Miami Beach Police Department, and you get killed in the line of duty? Is that covered under here? I'm not questioning what we do, how we do it, but the thing is, once we get into this as a county commission, we are going to mess it up, and it's never gonna be done the right way. There's gonna be a multitude of legal issues, reimbursement issues, court issues, is a lawyer gonna let, if I'm a lawyer in some of these high-profile cases, I'm not letting my client cashes. I agree with you, we should do this, we're the wrong agency. Take 50,000 a year, give it to the Sheriff's Advisory Council, tell them to come up with a plan, nothing goes for administration, nothing goes for anything, but they have a policy with what happens if, if an officer is killed and Broward County does their thing. The other thing I think we should do, no matter what we do, no matter how we do this, we should voluntarily ask the municipalities if they would like to kick some money in to do this too, because these are municipal police forces in many cases. If a Lazy Lake police officer, I don't even know if they have a police force, maybe their commission wants to, to do this. I know that they don't, that's why I'm saying it like that. I'm not picking out a police force, but the municipals, I, I know that they're not gonna want to do it, or, or they may want to do it, they may not want to budget for it, they may just want us to pay the dollars. We should do this, it's important to do this, it's an important benefit, but we're the wrong agency to do it. Let's give the money and get it to the person who needs it.
Okay. Yes, Senator Geller?
When I read this, and it said Broward County Law Enforcement and Fire Rescue, I thought we were limiting that to specifically BSO, Broward County employees, as opposed to municipal employees. So, and if Commissioner Udine, who's a lawyer, and I'm a lawyer, and we have different potential definitions, and it's clearly not clear, and we do need this at least clarified, and I also further agree with Commissioner Udine, that based on the issues that have come up, and based on the fact that we will make this retroactive to April 4th, I think that whatever we do has to be drafted by the county attorney, so that we know, have something in front of us that we're voting on. I'm glad Commissioner Bogan brought this important issue back up, but I don't think we're voting on it today. I think we're giving direction to the county attorney.
Discuss, discuss and direction.
Okay, so in that case...
So I think you're feeding all the feedback.
I get back to my earlier question.
Yep, he's getting all the feedback.
Is it, is this city, is this only county employees, or any law enforcement firefighter in the county?
It's Commissioner Bogan, let you answer that.
In the agenda item that was voted on...
In the agenda item that was voted on unanimously by everybody, it says that an officer firefighter killed in line of duty within two months, Broward County honored the sacrifice that law enforcement officers and firefighters. Doesn't say who they're working for, it says here in Broward County.
So it opens up to all municipalities.
And I don't know how you can do that, the dollar that's coming to pay is from cities that have BSO, and the dollar also has people that don't have BSO. So I think you cannot, you know, it was for anybody, any law enforcement firefighter in Broward County, that's number one. Number two, with all due respect to Commissioner Udine, I think we can do some things competently, and I don't think that there is a million issues here. I think that it's quite simple. If there's a lawsuit, you know, you're referring to a lawsuit, I don't see, if it's a set off, it's a set off. It has nothing to do with us, it'll be handled in court. If, if there's, you know, the question is, it's simple, I mean, it comes down to helping the family in a time of need, and I just don't see us, BSO or some other doing it more competently than us, but.
We understand.
We voted on this already, and, and I didn't bring this, by the way, today.
I know, Mr. Piro bought it forward, based on our actions that we did back later before, and due to the accident that has just occurred, Mr. Jackson.
So, so Mayor, I wasn't finished. So the rest of my comments are, I don't think this should be precluded only to Broward County BSO people. If it's a law enforcement officer, it's a law enfor, this could be the federal agent that lived in Broward County that served the subpoena a couple of years ago and got shot in Sunrise. That person theoretically has the same issues that they should be compensated. What I am saying is, and I stand by this, maybe this is a simple, easy type thing, but I don't even think we're gonna know, like, who the people are that we have to give the money to. And I think it'd be, I think it's a real thing, if, if somebody dies, what, maybe their parents take care of them, maybe their children take care of them, but what if there's competing claims? I agree, give them the money. I'm happy to, but.
Hold on, hold on, Commissioner Bogan, Commissioner Bogan, you need your microphone on.
Right.
So I pass away right now, you're gonna find out if I'm married, within one day, they're gonna know if I'm married, if I have kids, minor dependents, but if I'm married. Two, you pass away, anyone passes away, it's not that difficult to find out from an employer if the person's married or not, married, if they have dependents, you know, you're making it seem.
I agree, but it becomes much more difficult. Just look at every piece of jurisprudence when you talk about workers' compensation claims, when you talk about personal injury claims, it becomes a little bit more difficult. I don't want it to be different, and that's why I'm saying, give it to the United Way or to one of the charities, they can do this, they can have a process that the government doesn't have to be involved, and it gets the person the money faster. Aren't there people that are geared up to do this? We don't really, I've seen what we're doing with our rent programs, when people come in and say they have a backlog of rent, and we need to get the rental money to them, it's a complicated thing. Okay.
Well, I think, I think what, what Mr. Myer.
But I'm supportive of it, I wanna see what they can come up, and I've, like I said, I vote in favor of it, I wanna give these dollars to the person that needs it, but I wanna make sure, A, it gets to the right person, and B, that there's.
What you're saying is that the county administrator and her team can't.
Microphone.
What you're saying, let's just be straight, what you're saying is the county administrator or her team people can't find the right person and can't execute a check within 30 days to the right people, that's basically what you're saying.
What I'm saying is, so the county administrator calls the person who dies, parent, spouse, or whatever, they then have to.
Employer.
Who is their, who is the person that's responsible to get this money? Who pays the rent? Do they live at home with their parents? Do the parents get it? Is there a child that gets?
No, no, she simplified everything. 100% goes, 50, under this thing, the $1, if there's $1, 50 cents goes to the dependent children, 50 cents goes to the surviving spouse, or 100% goes to the surviving spouse, that's it, done.
Perfect.
Spouse, dependent children.
Sounds very simple, I'm sure that our county administrator can handle it, so you'll bring us back the ordinance, and I'm sure this is gonna be a super easy thing. I look forward to voting for it, I support it.
And I think Mr. Myers here and all this obviously will dissect it and figure out to make it simple as possible as we can, okay?
Yeah, Mayor, as I said before, I don't think the legal side needs to be complicated. I think we have to structure it in a way that's most advantageous for the surviving family. There are still some open policy things, everyone's pointed out things that are, that are difficult to sort through, but we can work with county administration, we could get this thing finalized, I would think, within the next 15 to 20 days, or maybe sooner, it'll be a top priority, we'll bring it back to you, we'll get it voted upon, we'll make it retroactive in the draft, and we look forward to wrapping it up.
Okay, Commissioner McKenzie has not spoken yet before Senator Geller, okay?
Just, just quickly, I think by sending it back and letting staff look at it, I think we're gonna flush out a lot of our questions. If we use the current death of the paramedic in the helicopter, you're gonna find a lot of these variables in there that we talked about. I think that's a good template to work out our concerns. So I think when you come back, you may have all the answers based on this scenario.
Okay, Mr. Myers, you wanted to jump in on that?
And then Mayor, I just wanted to point out, and it's something that Renee and I had talked about earlier today, what probably makes sense is to sit down with county administration, based upon this discussion, and to give you sort of a matrix. Do you want A or B? You walk through it, rather than put it into an ordinance or into a program right away, it's kind of a term sheet. And I think most of it is pretty clear, we can have a proposal, most of it's on the policy side. We're gonna try to keep it simple, fast, and as advantageous as possible for the person that would be receiving it.
Makes sense.
And I agree, I'm gonna finish, and I agree, but here again, if we use the current situation.
Which has the different variables.
We've already lost seven days.
Right.
To try to figure this out. So we need to figure it out as quickly as possible with those scenarios, and, and be reaching out to this family, since it's gonna be retroactive, to see what can we do, or what can we replace as soon as we figure it out.
And we already know those variables, Commissioner McKenzie, we do, being close to the situation, we do know those, which you're right, I think it's a great template to use, because it has so many different variables in it. I've got Senator Geller followed by Commissioner Bogan, this is round three or four.
Okay, and I was going to say, before Drew said what he did, that there are a couple of policy questions. I've listened carefully to all of my colleagues, and what I think I've heard as an emerging consensus is fixed amount, 50,000, number one, number two, with the exception of Commissioner Udine, I think that there is a desire to have the county administrator handle this, that number three, that this would apply to all law enforcement officers and firefighters that at least are working for a Broward County agency. There is a question of if you're working for a Broward agency, or you, and you live in Dade, or if you live in Broward but are killed in Dade, whether or not this would apply. I would recommend that this apply to people working for any law enforcement or fire agency in Broward County.
Correct.
So I think, so that's also appears to be consensus. Number four, I think you should limit, or define the term killed in the line of duty to something that is one year. So if they are exposed to a toxic chemical, and, you know, four months later they die from it, that that would apply, but if it, what, the exposure was 10 years ago, that it would not, that, and number five, that contrary to the 30 days that we try and get these checks out, as soon as possible, because they may be needed for funeral expenses, which may not wait that long, so we'd like to see this within a few days, which would give people a opportunity, forgive the county administrator, the opportunity to check with the law enforcement agency, and get all of this information on who the beneficiary should be. That appears to me, if anybody disagrees, please let me know, but I think that reflects the consensus of what I've heard.
I disagree with one thing, I'm okay with the county administrator doing it, I was asked to provide some context on this, so I was trying to give some what I think are better practice, but I just don't want to walk out. If the county administrator's doing it, I support it, I vote for this, I'm good with this.
The county administrator has heard all thoughts in here, in discussion, that they can incorporate what we feel.
Last but not least, I just wanna make sure I got what we talked about earlier. If there is no surviving spouse, and no surviving minor children, dependent children, there is no benefit, except if we want to maybe have for funeral, which now you're talking 10,000 or less, but I'm not saying we should give 50 grand, now let's find somebody else to give the 50 grand, some parents or somebody else out there. It goes to surviving spouse, dependent children, and then, and then if there is none, like the gentleman who passed away recently, then can we help with the burial, that's it, and that's what I would be limiting it.
Understood.
If I might clarify, just to ask a further question, so in a scenario, and I just wanna make sure I'm clear, so when we go back to draft this with the attorneys, we know the direction clearly of this board. So in a circumstance where an individual is killed in line of duty, they don't have a spouse, they don't have children, but maybe they live with their parents, and they are the sole breadwinner for that family, and they are killed in the line of duty if they live with their parents, so you would, is the direction not to go beyond the spouse and children?
You would want that.
If you want, I'm, I'm happy with that, but.
We just wanna make sure we have the clear parameters.
In these exceptions, maybe bring it to, I don't know, just bring it to the board, hey, we got a unique situation here, you guys wanna do that?
You could do that.
You know, on unique situations, you could bring it, we meet every month, except the summer, but I mean, we meet twice a month, you know, but bring it, unique situations, bring it to the board.
Okay. Mr. Myers, you wanted to chime in here before we wrap it up?
Yeah, and you can have it come back to you, or you could just have those main categories, and then say, or such other circumstances where there's a dependency, a financial dependency, for example, the, the parents, as determined by the county administrator, we don't want this to, you know, to have appeals, and we just wanna make it clear.
Good compromise, Mr. Myers.
And, and just to ask, when you say spouse, do you also want registered domestic partners? I'm assuming?
Correct.
Okay, just making sure, okay, thank.
Okay, Commissioner Fur, did you, I haven't ignored you, I just haven't heard you, did you have any further comments?
Not really, I think everybody's covered it pretty well. I, I mean, part of me was, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Because I don't know the extent of what, of, you know, death benefits that we provide, and when salaries stop, and all those kinda things, there's some, I have some questions there where they may take hold, but other than that, I think you all have covered it very well.
Very good, I'm just gonna wrap up with one of the, oh, sorry, Commissioner Rogers?
On to comment, I'm glad we added domestic partners, and that, I think that's fair.
There we go.
Okay, not everyone wants to be married, but everyone does have someone that they care about, live with, that influence their lives, and playing that role, so.
Absolutely true, good point. I think the discussion was healthy and well, I think everybody has their direction, Ms. Piro?
Yes, I just wanted to thank the, the board for their comments. I know this is, it seems very simple, but it is very complex and can be, so as, as witnessed by these comments, and thank you all, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I just wanna also make note and thank Sheriff Tony and the Broward Sheriff's Office for their generosity to pay for Ms. Wheaton's funeral arrangements. They stepped in, and they did that, so I wanna thank them for that, my understanding is they did that. So on behalf of Ms. Wheaton's family, we appreciate them for that. Okay, that concludes our agenda, we are now under our non-agenda slash commissioner reports. And who do we begin with today? Commissioner Dean?
I have no comments.
Okay.
Other than I wish everybody a happy holiday coming up, if they celebrate.
Commissioner Ryan, do you have any reports?
No, no comments.
Very good. Commissioner Bogan?
Just wanted to let everybody know that on the health program which is going on right now, the numbers are incredible, and what I mean by that is nearly 50% of everybody going through it is seeing, being required to see a doctor. And if I do shoot, if we do another commercial, would you guys like to be in it?
We would like to be joining you in the background.
Would you like to join me in it?
Yes, at least have us in the background, sir.
The county administrator thinks that, I think that I need to maybe have all you guys, we all can talk there.
We could say we.
We, I'd love it.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Just have a portrait of all of us in the background, and then you could be in the front.
No, I don't think they want that anymore, I think.
They could be the extras, sir.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take you up on that, I'm gonna call you guys.
Thank you, Commissioner Bogan.
Can I do that, I can call them, we're not voting.
No, no, we will not have you call us, we will have someone coordinate that, sir. I answered that for Mr. Myers. Commissioner McKenzie?
The reason why I had my pastor here today, he's new in town, he's new at our church, and I wanted him to see the people I work with, the people that move this county forward, so that's why I invited him today to see what, what I do, and what, who's working for this county. But the church is located over in Lauderdale Lakes, on Oakland Park, they were once housed here in the historic Dorset River Bend, but they built the church out there about 16 years ago, on Oakland Park, but he is the new leader, new pastor of that church, and I just wanted him to be introduced today. And the other comment I would have, just a question for Monica. I know I brought up the PACE program, and Y Green, and Y Back, and you all went back and did some research, both from the attorney's office, and you brought information back to me, but I was in receipt of a, I guess, a explanation, a PACE, no longer having an interlocal agreement with us, from you, can you explain? Do you wanna see it?
Yeah, I need to see that, and I might be able to, if possible, to have a chance to look at it.
My point is, I know you looked at it, and these, these, these programs are promoting that they're, they're with Broward County in terms of doing home repairs, and a lot of our seniors are being misled with their practices, and we said we would look at it and try to disassociate ourselves with it, but PACE is, is one of those, and the way I read this is, they're no longer, we're no longer supporting or participating? Can you help me?
Mr. Myers, can you jump in on there?
And we've been working with the county attorney's office on this, and Drew, I don't know if you wanted to opine on the legal side of that, and we're working on the education side of that for, for residents. But Drew, if you wanna talk about the legal side?
Sure, thank you. So periodically, Commissioner McKenzie, as you know, mailings go out, or emails go out, that misuse our logo or implies some sort of endorsement or affiliation with the county. The board actually gave us some direction a week ago to reinforce our ordinances, to try to limit that a little bit more. We do move forward with cease and desist orders. There is one entity that either terminated or allowed to expire interlocal agreement that it had with the county that we've been asking for. We had a conversation with them, it was either earlier this week or late last week, that was in the context of potential litigation and settlement, so I'd rather discuss it with you privately. However, I will tell you that they, that folks do seem amenable to re-entering into that agreement. It would require them to use disclosures of certain types, a certain font size, to make clear what the risks are. We can also add perhaps more clearly that they have to make clear expressly that they're not affiliated with the county. Those are things that we're looking at right now, but we do recognize the problem. There is litigation in the state against other entities, it's, it's a little bit complicated, and because of the potential for litigation, I'd rather address it with you privately.
And I get that, but my, my thing is, if we're not affiliated with these entities, but yet still you can take that money and put, and, and, and put it on your taxes that you pay to Broward County, still sends to me a mixed signal or message that the county's involved, and I know it's, everything we do is legal, but we have seniors that are being preyed upon right now, not only by these two entities that I know that we blessed at some point because we thought it was a good idea. Present, in the present time, looking at it, I've seen people get hurt in these programs because they did not understand the legal piece of it, and that's the only reason why I brought it to our attention, so that we can get as far away as we can from it, so we won't even have a situation like this where it's legal and you gotta have a sidebar with me. I, I want to address it, if we're in, we're in, if we're out, we're out.
I think, Mr. Myers, I think it's said enough here that it, we don't wanna get into an issue that we're talking. Ms. Piro, again, short and sweet.
Yes, sir, and I believe, I know Dr. Harado is set to brief you on this on Monday, was the first availability that you guys could connect together with your schedules, so, and we're also, I wanted to make sure you knew that we, our team's already been printing, we've got door hangers in the print shop right now to educate, to go out into the unincorporated area on this very issue, so I'm hopefully, hoping that during that briefing, you'll have a little more comfort as well.
So the only area we can go in is unincorporated, we can't?
No, I just, we wanted to make sure we were addressing the, the body that you all serve as the municipal government for.
I get that part, but we also have other, just like.
Yes, sir.
The benefit, we made it all law enforcement, so my point is. --the benefit. We made it all law enforcement. So, my point is, I have North Lauderdale, Temerack, I have all these other cities, Pompano, and I'm getting complaints from all of these folks about this program and other programs. But the two in particular that we have done something with in the past, and I want to send a message to everyone in terms of where we are in the educational piece, like I spoke of earlier. So, however we work it out, I'm not trying to tell you how to do it, but I want everyone to be able to be educated on the separation of these two entities.
Understood.
Thank you, Commissioner. Senator Geller?
Couple of quick items first. Commissioner McKenzie, and follow up on what you're saying. We'll talk to you in a moment. The, Commissioner McKenzie--
Commissioner McKenzie, Senator Geller speaking.
Okay. Commissioner McKenzie, you should also be aware that there's currently a litigation involving whether or not we can keep our consumer protection laws that we have about PACE, and the county attorney can brief you on that. I chair the Community and Urban Affairs Committee of Florida Association of Counties, and this is one of the items on our agenda is PACE. Actually, we have two separate items on that. So, county attorney can tell you about that. I would, but I can't.
Well aware of that, but my issue's still the same, that I'm getting the phone calls, and it just didn't start when I got here nine months ago. It was for the last eight years in terms of how folks are being misled.
I understand. I've had some of the same calls. Secondly, I was at the Broadview Park Homeowner Association earlier this week. I just want to, those of you that don't have large unincorporated areas, please remember for Commissioner McKenzie and I, and anyone else, that, you know, the unincorporated areas, that we are the local government. I feel a much greater responsibility for Broadview Park than I do for any of my cities because I'm the only elected official they have. They don't have the two layers of government. So, I'm there more than I am in some of the cities. And please remember that Commissioner McKenzie and I, I think, share mostly, I think, the largest unincorporated areas in the county. And finally, there was a lot of discussion on trying to get more funding for cultural. I know some of us do have leftover office account dollars. I've taken my office account dollars, this will come up at the next meeting, and am directing leftover office account dollars to the Broward County Cultural Division. So, some of you that do have, I personally think, I know others may disagree, that if you have leftover dollars, it should only go to county agencies because it's county tax dollars. I fully recognize some people may disagree. But, so, I've taken my money and put it towards the cultural division. If you have leftover dollars and you do care and that think we need more spending, I would urge you to do the same thing towards the cultural division. And that's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Colleagues, I'm going to give mine to kids that are traveling to Tallahassee for Children's Week. That's something I do and want to continue doing so. Thank you for what you're doing with yours. Mr. Mayor, I've been traveling around talking about the foreign trade zone, the off-site foreign trade zones, and I'm realizing that we need to really invest, talk about it, have booklets or whatever it takes. I was in, whatever it takes to get that information out. Realtors aren't aware. Most property owners are not aware, and I know I was with a group just yesterday, and the information we shared was well received. So, but I learned a lot, that we could be doing a lot more, and we'll be talking to staff continuously about off-site foreign trade zone and the reason they were established in the first place. Are they, do we see the return on the investment? Are we truly sure that folks know about it? When we go on trade missions, is that on the list of things that we're going to promote about Broward County? And, you know, just by talking to those that are doing these things, we find out what they're doing that we are not doing. So, that is, that for me, and of course, will continue my advocacy for my seniors who are having hardships with their assessments and being out of home and the high cost for just food in general, and the fact that we just need to come up with a solution or to have conversation as a county as to how we're going to keep folks in their homes, and also to harden our condos. So, you'll hear me talk about that all the time until we come up with a solution. Thank you very much, colleagues.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just a couple of items, and we'll move on to administration. Earliest week, and those who have served as mayors, kind of a unique opportunity to, when you have council generals come visit you. We had Taiwan this week, Mr. Chow, and he was really just a personal individual. And I want to thank Paola Sandy from your office for the tremendous work they do on international leadership. I think it's really awesome. Also, I had the chance to stop by the Broward Legislative Delegation meeting this week, and those who have served in the state. They did elect Senator Fizzo, was named the chair of the delegation, and Representative Marie Woodson was the vice chair. Was the vice chair. So, those are our leadership of the Broward delegation. This Saturday, be joining Habitat Humanity. I don't know, Commissioner McKenzie, at the City of Fort Lauderdale, celebrate the groundbreaking of the BPI Village. That's Habitat. There's going to be about 20 new townhomes. They're going to be groundbreaking there. So, please join us if you wish to be part of that, or anybody else can join us too. Talk about affordability with Habitat. I mean, they do a wonderful job.
I'll be in Houston at that funeral.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, we'll miss you. I will tell them that, okay. And Commissioner Dean will be with us. That's great. Monday is Patriot Day, 9/11. So, joining the ceremony at the airport, as you remember, one of the most horrific days in our country. Again, everybody's welcome to join us there at the Fort Lauderdale International Airport. Thursday, September 14th is a ribbon-cutting ceremony for BPHI on 7/7. So, look forward to joining the Fort Lauderdale community as well. Commissioner Dean mentioned about upcoming Happy Rosh Hashanah that begins September 15th. Those who celebrate, happy holiday to you as well. Do want to, again, recognize Dr. Tillman, and welcome to Broward County, and thank you for your service to our committee. We so appreciate you. Best wishes. Okay. Ms. Piro, any report?
I do. Thank you. I wanted to congratulate Carlos Acosta, Deputy Director of Public Works, who was recently honored by the American Society of Civil Engineers as the Engineer of the Year. Carlos received this well-deserved recognition of personal character and integrity and achievements, merit, and contribution to the society and engineering profession. So, we're really proud of him and of our team. And another really great kudos moment, we just got word this week, after a couple of years, I should say, I think about five, six years that we've been in the works of this, but our Highway and Bridge Maintenance Division is the proud recipient of the Broward County's first U.S. patent for inventing a larvicide spraying system for mosquito control that reduces, you know, the mosquito population for Zika, dengue fever, yellow fever, and saving millions of dollars really for this county to utilize the chemicals, the safe chemicals that we use, but saving a lot of money to this county for this, because of this invention. And we've had outreaches from all over the country for ability to use these type of technology. So, that was developed in-house by our very talented team, and we just received our first U.S. patent. Yep.
Congratulations. Great job. All right. Mr. Melton, any words of wisdom?
Yes, actually, just a reminder, I'd sent a memo to you all during the summer soliciting any ideas or areas you would like for us to audit during the upcoming fiscal year. And I've heard from some of you, but if there are any areas, so please try to get them to me sometime this month as we were finalizing that list. It could be any county program, any county operation or department, or any contractor that the county is doing business with.
Thank you, sir. Follow up by Mr. Myers. Any report? No comments? Okay, great. Before we adjourn, again, our first budget workshop here, excuse me, a budget public hearing will be tonight at 5:01 PM. It's very imperative that everybody on this diet shows up. We're missing, of course, Vice Mayor Rich, and of course, we have Commissioner Fur on the phone. But there's some issues though, so we wanted to make sure that everybody, it gets here tonight at 5:01 PM.
Mr. Mayor, where are you closed?
Hold on. Yes, Commissioner?
Okay. I need to go back to my city tonight, and if I don't say hello to the pastor, that pastor's the largest church in the city of Lauderdale Lakes, I would be remiss in not doing so. Welcome to our meeting, and I'm glad you stayed for the entire meeting. That's awesome. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Fur, will you be joining us this evening?
I will be there.
Any, I'm sorry, I forgot you. Again, is any reports you want to make? I'm so sorry.
No, that's fine. I was going to save it for next week anyway. Thanks, though.
Okay, and blessings to feel better, okay?
Appreciate it.
I told you I forget about you every now and then. I'm sorry, Commissioner.
I know. I know. That's okay.
Out of sight, out of mind, right?
Very quickly. Very quickly.
All right. Thank you, everybody. This will be adjourned.